We're going to get started with our open mic section. I've only received one request to speak. As I call you up to the podium, we'll need you to state your name, your address, and we'll start the timer. You'll have three minutes within which to speak. And bear in mind that the council may not respond to any of your speak. Julia Pennell.
Mayor, City Manager, and Councilman, I'm very excited. I want to thank you again. If you've not been over to the firefighter park, that final page, the cover is up. I got a call yesterday afternoon from Erin, and I want you to go look at what that, your department has done and what you did with your vote. It's, I called J.C. Campbell, who's had surgery, and gave him the good news. So I'm excited because most of the day, there's still some variance of sun, yes, it's going to get at different angles, but most of the day, our children in Granbury and Hood County will have a covered area at a city park if they can go and play. And so, I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional about it, but it's beautiful, and I encourage you to go look at it. We'll plan a ribbon cutting and a thing when we get the plaque done, but I couldn't wait to share that with you. And once again, say thank you for those matching funds, and thank you for caring about the children of Hood County and giving them that special area to play in. So I encourage you tomorrow, drive by and go look at it. It's beautiful.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, we'll consider the consent agenda. We have the minutes from February 7th, and the minutes from February 21st, they were both placed in your packet for your review. This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, unless you have some amendments? And I've found nothing to bring to light.
Mayor, I move that we just approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra to approve the consent agenda. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Hewlett. Any discussion regarding it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And motion carries. Moving on to our deliberation agenda, item number one. At this time, we're going to receive a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's an audit that took place for the City of Granbury for the fiscal year 2010, 2011. This is a recap presentation, and I'm going to call on our City Manager to talk to us about what we have before us.
Each year, we issue a comprehensive annual financial report, which is really our financial report for the city. This year, the city was much improved in their financial condition, and we'll go through that in just a second here. But we issue this, it is used by all the bond rating agencies, a lot of the investor services use this, and so it's a very important document. You see the cover that we put? We tried to put as many, what we felt were really important things there from Granbury, because a lot of people who see this, these go out on CDs and everything else. It's a good way to publicize Granbury and let them know how pretty Granbury is, and that's why we do that. The first page I want to, and I'm just going to be pulling, the council here was given, the CAFER was downloaded to your, or at least loaded to your iPad and downloaded. We also had a packet, had a hard copy in the packet. But I'm going to pull some specific information out of the CAFER for both the council and for the citizens here watching tonight. The first one is the Avalorum valuation growth, and you see that in 2000, the last two years have been a little bit of hit to Granbury and City of Granbury. It went down 0.79% in 2011, and then almost 6%, well, 5.5% to 6% in 2012. Now, that's certainly not anywhere near what other cities have seen in terms of drops of Avalorum value. Our Avalorum value continues to hold. We will receive on April 30th, the first preliminary scoping of the valuation from the head appraiser for Hood County. We'll get that first number on April 30th, and will be interesting. We have had, obviously, some positions close on 377, and there's been some, you know, issues with evaluations. Certainly, the evaluations are determined by the cash flow in many of the commercial units. The residential, I talked to him, he seems to be holding pretty constant. We haven't seen as big a drops in residential, that was his opinion, and so we'll be interested to see what those values are. But that valuation determines, all Avalorum taxes are based on the valuation of the Avalorum, and that's an important number. Moving on to the, just so everyone knows, before we leave Avalorum, property tax rates, we continue to be the lowest tax rate around. Once again, we're down at the bottom with .4039. If you lived in Kennedale, or you lived in Cleveland, and you had the same type house you own today, you'd be paying almost twice as much the tax. And that's an interesting, you know, point of, now, the reason that is, is that we're a regional hub, and therefore, we get sales tax from all of Hood County. That really helps us keep our tax rate low, and that's a real positive here for the citizens. Sales tax collections, as you can see, they have been lower, and the sales tax has been lower for the last year. It was down in, well, it was down in 2009 and 2010. It came back pretty strong in 2011. In fact, we're getting back close to some of the top earnings. You know, our top was back in 2008 at 6.3, but we came in at 5.8, which was as good as 2007. So we've made a comeback in our sales tax collections. And we budgeted, we always budget conservatively in our budget process, so we budgeted for 2012 to have a 4% decline. Right now, year-to-date, we're at 1.5% higher than 2011, so that's good news. Things are continuing to improve in the City of Granbury, and that's a real positive. And we hope that that does continue. If we do that, we'll come in at 5.9, which is even higher than 2007, so that'd be a positive. Hotel occupancy tax has made a comeback, there's no doubt about that. Once again, we work conservative in our budgeting. We budgeted $500,000. Right now, we're up 18% over the prior year. We were up 10.9% in 2011. So our hotels are seeing much more occupancy, and that's a positive. Tourism has made a significant comeback, as you can see. If we were to continue that 18% increase over last year, we would come in at 615, which is high as we've ever had in Granbury in terms of tourism, which would be amazing. Now, that doesn't say, we still have our big months coming in, obviously, the summer, so I doubt we will maintain that high rate of growth, but we're still, we're still way ahead of where we even projected we would be. Looking at the actual financials, one of the key points, it's almost, it is our equity balance, okay? It's called unrestricted fund balance. Our charter requires that we maintain a 25% reserve basis, our operating expenses. What that means is that we have three months of operating capital available for both the general fund, which is our normal governmental activities, and our utility fund, which is our utility-based electric, water, and sewer. Our balances have made a comeback, especially in the utility fund, and we'll talk about that. It's for different reasons than you might expect. It's not for necessarily margins, although we have had an improvement in margin. The 3.83, you can see, general fund is holding in there, but we're at 41% of our unrestricted fund balance, 41% of operating budget in the general fund, and 30% now in the utility fund. We were in a little bit of trouble last year. We were down to 20%, was below the 25% requirement, and so we focused very heavily on that, on basically improving the margin, going after additional revenue, and also doing some things we'll talk about here in a minute for the utility fund. This is just, it may be hard to read, but it really lists out the revenues and expenses that were incurred for the general fund. You can see our revenue was up 9.8%. We had higher electric franchise fees. We collect the franchise fee from the electric companies, and it was a hot summer, and so that helped in our franchise fee as a growth. Sales tax was up, as we talked about, and so there, and we also did a refunding on the debt service, which allowed us to earn an extra $200,000, which we had promised the council we would, and you can see that coming across in the less debt service. All over 9.8%. At the same time, we were putting strong controls on our expenses, and we actually lowered operating expenses 1.9%. That is a good combination. You like to see your revenues go up and your expenses go down. And so we did, we made a lot of our decrease related to salaries. We froze a lot of positions. We had a lot of management salaries that were frozen or just not filled, and so we were able to lower our salary cost in many of the areas, and that's how we were able to maintain control of costs. Transfers, everything else you come down, and you can see that the net fund balance, or the net change, change in fund balance was about a million dollars. So that was a positive for general fund. That's a healthy return based on expenses. Yeah. Trying to remember exactly what that was, but there was some costs there. Utility fund, what we can look at here, as I said, the utility fund had a net increase in retained earnings, basically, of a million seven, but that's made up of really two components, primarily. The first is that we did sell water. We earned $560,000 for selling the remainder of our allocation of raw water. It was the first year we were able to do that. And the other one was that we had, once again, a contribution from developers in terms of our infrastructure of around $824,000. And that tells million three, almost a million four, the million seven. And so it wasn't so much a big margin issue, although we did increase the margin from the prior year through finding additional revenues. Those were the major two reasons why the net equity went up. So revenue, once again, our, the equity fund now is showing a 30% ratio on our operating expenses, which is now a very good ratio. So we have built the fund back up. We have not built it up enough on the cash flow side, and the rating agencies and the investment services are looking more at cash in today's environment as opposed to net asset, okay? Those are net asset numbers. Our cash balance has grown to a little over a million, million one, million two, I believe, and that has made it where we're much stronger. We need to have that cash fund probably up in the $2 million, $2.5 million range, and so we need to continue to grow that cash, because that is important. Why don't you go to the next one? That's it? That's all? Okay. Overall, the report is good. We recently had a review by Fitch that simply said, we're stable, we're A-plus rating, and so everybody feels very good with what we have, some challenges ahead of us and what we need to do, but overall, let me say this. I want to recognize Ava Gregory, who did a wonderful job in preparing the CAFER. She worked day and night on this thing, and so I want to let everyone know she's done an excellent job in preparing this. What I would like to do real quick, our auditing firm is here, and for the partner of our auditing firm, George Morgan. Yeah, Morgan. And I'd like to have a few words from him. Peter, I'm sorry, Peter Morgan from George Morgan.
We get a lot of George's names, come in, so that's no problem at all. Well, I'd like to add to, pretty much what I had in my note, it's already in your presentation there. I mean, you did have some good results this year. Again, the general fund went up about a million dollars, utilities went up about a million seven. You know, our job is to audit your financial statements and issue our opinion, and we have done that. Do a number of tests, look at compliance, various sundry things that we do to give us assurance that we can issue opinions. And our opinion is in the financial section. It's on page one. It's what we would call a, in accounting terminology, unqualified opinion. That means that we, based on all our work we've done, we feel like the financial statement fairly presents your financial position, results of operations for the year. Again, the bonding people, people that provide grants, anybody that does any kind of analysis about the city's financial condition is going to look at that report. So again, that's the standard unqualified, clean opinion. We also have to issue another report that has to do with government accounting, under government accounting standards, and that's on page 108. It has to do with, we test compliance, and we test internal controls. We have to inform you about any new findings. We didn't have any findings. There were no material weaknesses in internal control. We didn't have any findings as far as compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, agreements, and so forth. So again, that would be a clean opinion. We also issued a separate letter, which is aside from the report, and we have to tell you if we have any issues during the course of the audit, unable to get information, you know, just various problems that we might encounter. We didn't have any of that. I think the audit went smoothly. There is, our journal entries that we made during, of course, the audit are attached there for your information. One thing that was, took place this year, was a little bit of shifting of the, our governing body, the government accounting standard board comes out with various pronouncements from time to time, and of course, we as auditors have to look at those and make sure that the financial statements adhere to them, because again, you do submit your report to a certificate of achievement. So part of that was a redefinition of fund balance. It doesn't change any dollar amounts, but there's, and the report shows the various categories that governments are now expected to use, which, and in the process of that, it was determined that the airport fund, really, should, under that new terminology, should be accounted for as an enterprise fund. Anyhow, that change was made, and that's reflected in this report here. I'd like to, of course, answer any questions that you might have. There's a lot of information in the report. I mean, the city has a transmittal in there, in there, there's a management discussion, analysis, and also, you know, there's lots of footnotes, and of course, we have budget comparisons, and actually, the general fund budget, I believe, there's a few small variances, but overall, the expenditure, the actual expenditure, are over $400,000 under budget, so again, that's a positive as well. Basic numbers drawn over there, and a little video there, and so if there's any questions I might ask, or anything else you'd like me to go over, I'd be happy to show.
In the adjusting journal entries, you show one entry there that relates to deferred sales tax revenues, pickup of income of about $473,000. Is that a sort of a standard reoccurring entry that might recur from hooking up to deferred versus?
Yes, it is.
One year, it might go one way and the other the next, or what?
Right. Well, actually, you know, there's a delay in payment of sales tax, so really, what the states collected, there's a delay in the time that you actually get to make. So we look to see how much was collected actually through the end of your year, even though it wasn't paid.
It's the accrual.
Anybody else on council have a question? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. So just adjust the cash to accrual method.
But it nets out, it doesn't make any difference.
Right. The only difference would be, you know, the flex.
Whatever it is.
I have about three questions, maybe two. Explain to us one thing you said about a clear opinion. What's the difference in a clear opinion, unsatisfied or satisfied?
Well.
What's the best?
Well, obviously, an unqualified opinion is what you want. We're saying that, based on all our tests, we believe your financial statement fairly presents your operations and your balance sheet. It could be that there's some, maybe you take accounting position. Of course, we have to deal with what is prescribed, generally accepted accounting for government entities, so that can be comparable to some entities. So if you were to take a position that is contrary to that, that might qualify qualification. Or if there's, you know, there's something that might be, okay, for instance, if I decided we depreciate assets, if you decided you were going to discharge everything off, and that would not fairly present your financial position. So we can have scope limitations, or they would be of a certain degree, and then maybe you could be in a position where the finances were such that we might not be a going concern. So obviously, our opinion would be, we have the mission, so if there is a qualification that would say so in the report, we have to explain it, if there is not.
You gave us the best it is.
Yeah. It is a little confusing that an unqualified opinion is better than a qualified opinion.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And if you had a qualification, you probably wouldn't get a certificate.
No, no, we wouldn't, that wouldn't be good.
You've gotten that for years and years, and I see no reason why this year would be any different.
All right, well, thank you. I've got two more, one more question on about water. Wayne, you said that we received fixed $560,000 for water we sold. Was that one time or two times we sold the water?
We did, we're not able to sell it the second time, the BRA wouldn't approve our second sale. They have come back recently, so they would, they would approve that.
All right. Did the BRA pay us the full amount, or they take out their?
No, no, they paid us full amount.
All right.
No, we still paid them, our full amount for them, for the raw water.
We already paid that.
And they paid us back 500. So we paid them 615,000, which we did every year, but slow down, we paid them, we got 500.
That's already out there.
That was from Dow Chemical, not from BRA.
From BRA, yeah. We got it, yeah. The BRA allowed us to do it. So, yeah, it actually came from that.
All right. Y'all were talking about the utility fund, we have more cash, which is good, and you said you'd explain to us how we got more cash than the utility fund.
Well, it was the sale of the raw water, and the, well, no, I was saying that we'll, I'll explain to you why, which is how we got more net assets.
Yes.
And it was that the, the, it was $824,000 improvements.
It was it?
Anyone who puts in a, you know, any housing, they then give us those improvements. If that goes on the balance sheet, it comes through the income statement. So that's part of, so that 1.3, 1.4 million, or 1.7 million increase was from those two items. So we didn't really make a different margin off custom. We just had two items that did it.
There was just two items that did it?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be HEB one of them?
No, no.
I'm confused, Wayne.
Okay. We sold the raw water for $560,000, and then we had, well, yes, okay, there are improvements there out at the, it would actually be Vista that actually gave us those improvements for that infrastructure. I see what you're saying.
That's where I thought it was, but it's not.
Yeah. It was Vista. That was part of it, for sure.
Would you mind asking Wayne a question about that, since you're on the subject, about the assets on that utility fund, Wayne? Because you clarified a while ago that, I mean, because I don't want anybody to walk out of this council meeting and hear that you, you know, because we know what electricity is doing to folks out here. And you made it very clear, and I just want to make sure that you say that again, if did I hear it right, that, yeah, the asset situation is one thing, but our cash flow is another, and our cash flow does need to be corrected. We're, we're at about 1.2, and you'd like to see it around 2.5?
Yeah, not only us, but the rating agencies, everybody else. I think they're looking for another million, million and a half. That's what I get whenever I talk to the ratings. They were happy with us, having made that much improvement.
Well, Mr. Morgan, that brings up just one question I have for you. You all have been doing our audit now for, I think, three years? Four years? It's three or four years? Okay. And so, when our City Manager, who was our financial guy, tells us, and we all know that in 2011, we did have some trouble with the utility fund, when you look back even further than that, and you see that utility fund, so as you stand here today before, if you feel like that we're way further ahead than we were several years ago, and what do you pinpoint that on? As far as, where do you really see that management has made the changes, or where have we spent the less money, or where have? Obviously, we increased, the councils before us increased the electric rate accordingly. Just a little summary on that, if you don't mind.
Well, I think, we did have, we did have, I'm sure, a lot of it's in, you know, we see in mind, a lot of this talk of appreciation, of, 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 of.
Yeah, but that was a negative. We actually, because we had added more assets, our appreciation.
Well, right, yeah, it actually went up, but I'm saying from, it does affect that increase in your net assets. But you did have, there's a cash flow statement in here, and you did have.
Thank you.
Mr. Parsons, you got any other questions regarding this? Anybody on the other side of me? Do you have a question? Okay.
And just so you know, we'll be sending this out, we make the presentation to the council, and then we'll be sending it out to the agencies based on everyone's acceptance of the.
At this time, thank you, Mr. Sneed, we appreciate you being here. I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan.
Morgan.
I've got every name down here except the right one, sorry.
He's younger than I am, I'll take him.
Hey.
Sorry about that. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to accept the CAFER for the fiscal year 2010, 2011 as presented. Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding the CAFR? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
All right. Well, I want to thank you again for allowing us to be of service. Uh, I want to thank the management and staff, that's, you know, we're in the force of audit, makes away from their time, and I tell you, they're, they're appreciative of it, so we really, really appreciate that. And again, for allowing us to be of service.
Thank you very much for your service, sir. We're going to move on to item number two. At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Jim Leach and Kathy Casey of the Inn on Lake Granberry to amend the existing planned development zoning district to allow for the existing bed and breakfast located at 205 and 221 West Doyle Street to operate as a hosted or an unhosted bed and breakfast, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said amendment to the planned development. Uh, the applicant has proposed to amend the existing P D for an operation of a bed and breakfast facility to operate as either hosted or unhosted. Scott, if you would, please clarify why we're needing to even consider this, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. In essence, the area that's seen on the screen, bounded in blue and in purple, is the existing planned development. Uh, currently, the planned development, um, allows for a up to 14 guest suite hosted B and B on the two recorded lots. Uh, they're not changing the allowable number of suites. They currently operate 13 guest suites within the two recorded lots. They live on site. What they're wanting to do is actually potentially move from one of the, uh, rooming areas on the Westernmost lot and move into a lease house, uh, within a thirty, uh, 300-foot radius. So, the amendment does two things. It actually gives them the option to either reside on site as a hosted B and B for up to 14 guest suites, or unhosted, provided that, and, and this is their supplemental, that they live within a 300-foot radius. Uh, they want to be proximate to the property. They want to manage the property. Uh, they want to be within a nice shot of the property, but they want to offer up another guest suite available and put it online. Uh, the other little nuance is, the previous P D was good for a five-year term. It was issued in 2008. They want to reevaluate the term and extend it for another five years, uh, from the date of council approval, which would be today. Uh, and I can tell you for record, since the S U Ps, or since the S U P and the P D was issued on the site, uh, we've had no formal file complaints on the property as it exists, as a B and B.
All right. So, council, what we have is a request to add the addition of unhosted, I believe, is basically what we're talking about. Oh, comprehensively, that it's already a hosted.
That's correct.
But unhosted allows them to reside some 300 feet from the existing property, is...
Correct.
We're still in the public hearing. Uh, does the applicant want to speak on this at this time? All right. Let me see if anybody has any questions for the applicant before we go into... I, I've got a question for you, Mr. Leach. I notice in the existing S U P, or I'm sorry, in the existing, uh, restrictions, that there is, uh, no live band or audio equipment at the site. I was just curious, you know, we're trying to find nightlife and stuff like that, things to do. Have you run into any instances where you've had a request on, at your place to actually have a reception with outdoor, uh, activities taking place during the spring or summer? And is that restrictive for you guys? Hi, this is Kathy.
The, the existing, um, coordinate, uh, says that we cannot have any live music or, if I can read on, uh, 221 property.
Uh, actually, it says 225 here.
It's, it's 221. Yeah, it's 221 on the, uh, overhead, too. So, that may be a...
Um, 205, that was restricted a little bit.
That was a, yeah, that was a clerical address error on the original, uh, paste-in on the staff report. But it is the 221. We researched the...
I, I see where it's suggested now.
Yeah. And that, and that basically is protection against the Westernmost property owner, but not on the main house site.
Okay. That clarifies that.
205 is not, not correct.
The 225 is not correct. It's 221.
Uh, you have to scroll down a little further, Mr. Allen. That's where I was misled.
So, we, we have had events that have been, that are with the, on 205.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I had a question, if you'd mind.
All right. Uh, Mr. Allen has a question for you guys.
I noticed in here that the, uh, our staff recommended this, but, uh, trying to scroll up this thing, there was a fence, they were needing to put the fence up.
Yes, you already did. Okay. Go in agreement with everything they're asking for.
Yes.
All right, please.
Anybody else have questions for the applicant? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else in the public want to speak regarding this public hearing? This is your chance to do so. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to accept the, uh, allowance, I'm sorry, this is a rezoning, amending the existing planned development zoning district to allow for the existing bed and breakfast at 205 and 221 West Doyle Street to operate as a hosted or an unhosted bed and breakfast, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said amendment to the P D.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second. Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us up to item number three. We will now open a public hearing regarding a request of Hope Development Partners to modify the existing planned development on lots 5R2 through 8R2, Block 2 of the Avalon Edition Phase. Property is located at 1,003 through 1,009 West Avalon Court, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said amended P D. I understand, Scott, that this is a, a request by an applicant to modify what was, uh, patio homes to be, or, I'm sorry, to go from townhomes. Uh, clarify this for me. I, I think it's going from townhomes. He's wanting to go with patio homes?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
In essence, he, uh, was, uh, proposing in the previous P D for townhome lots, and what he'd like to amend it, amend the P D to is to allow for three patio home lots, which will allow for more open space between the structures. Of course, the, the patio of the townhome lot would be four living units with a common wall, so we'd have more of an opaque presence, uh, along the street, cul-de-sac. We're decreasing the number of lots by one and providing more open space between the structure. Uh, along with the P D request is variances within the P D to reduce the front build line from 25 to 20, increase the rear build line to from 12 to 15, and reduce the side setback from 10 foot on one side, eight inches on the other, to five on both sides. So, basically, you have a decrease of eight inches, but you do have more open space between the structures, and you're decreasing the amount of structure there on site. Both P D and city staff recommend approval of the plan as presented.
All right, council, so what we have before us is we've got, uh, applicant that's requesting to modify his lots. He's going to downsize the number of structures within this, uh, it's basically a cul-de-sac, I believe. It's, it's a little turnaround in the development. Going to reduce it from a total of four townhome lots to three patio homes. Do you have any questions regarding this, council members? I understand. Anybody in the public want to speak regarding this particular public hearing? We'll close the public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the P D along with the listed variances for this applicant.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Perkel, to approve the planned development on lots 5R2 through 8R2, Block 2 of the Avalon Edition Phase. Property is located at 1,003 through 1,009 West Avalon Court, and approve the ordinance along with the variances. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This time, we'll move to item number four, considering approved requests of Debbie Hicks, first off, to vacate and abandon a portion of public alley between East Barton Street and East Moore Street, and between North Houston Street and North Crockett Street, contained within Block 5 of the Barton Edition, the City of Granberry, Hood County. And, uh, council, we'll, we'll look at this first item first. It, this is a alleyway that was originally planned by city developers, uh, back when they first mapped out the city of Granberry. It has not been used as an alleyway. This particular item has popped up because of, uh, a replating issue that we're going to be opening a public hearing on here in just a second. And, uh, it's my understanding, Scott, that, uh, the idea here is to not vacate the entire alleyway, but only as time warrants that we need to abandon it to regard these replat issues.
That's correct. As contained within Block 5, which is delineated by the streets, we've done incremental replats where we've abandoned and vacated the city's interest in the alley. And as a part of that vacation and abandonment process, you have an adoption ordinance for you to ratify that. There's also a quitclaim deed, and the way the ordinance and quitclaim deed is fashioned is that the city will release its surface interest in the property, but we will retain our mental right interest within the public dedicated right of way. That's been the standard protocol for all the, uh, the abandonment procedures within, uh, the Barton Edition. Once we abandon it, it'll revert to the property owner. Yes. So, we, we're losing maintenance costs.
Every one of them is free, or it's a fact.
Uh, we have done, uh, other areas, but we still have areas of interest where it's still in the public interest. And there's only one way to remedy that, is to have a city-initiated plat, the surveyor go out there, uh, paid by the city, and to basically do it on the entire block.
We know we can't, same thing.
It's recorded at the courthouse, and of course, our parks department and our planning department would have to look it up and see who owns it. If we get a, for example, a highways and grass, uh, problem, we would go out there, research, and see whose maintenance responsibility it is.
This prob-, this problem arose several years ago. This was a fire lane that I built, and all the way from, from the cemetery, all the way to the city square, and it was getting dissolved, and all of them Jason's property. This, what they did, they, they, Jason's property, the property, the, 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 the people, they, 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 they,[1469.13]
But what we have before us, council, is just this one little section located behind, uh, that particular lot, uh, which is at 723 North Crockett Street. So, at this time, I'll entertain an, uh, a motion to, and accept the ordinance, and entertain the quitclaim, and authorize the mayor to proceed with the abandonment of the alleyway.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, we have a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I'm gonna have to.
Alright, please note one abstention, uh, Mr. Perkel, due to his proximity to the At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a replat of 723 North Crockett Street, being a portion of lot 4 and all of lot 5, block 5 of the Barton addition, as lot 5R, block 5 of the Barton addition. Scott, this basically just clears up, uh, an issue with, uh, what we just amended and approved, uh, the abandonment of the alleyway, is that correct?
That's correct. It does two things, mayor. It, uh, modifies the recorded plat in lot now to the center of the alley to the west, and, uh, it, uh, proposes to bring the platted lot to the north, to the existing fence between the two adjoining property owners, where an existing fence is already built, uh, based on a mutual agreement of the adjoining property owner to the north.
That's a part of lot 5, I guess.
That's correct.
I mean, lot 4.
That's correct.
Scott, can I ask you a question here? Who pays for the filing and all that? If they apply, they pay?
That's part of their plat administration fee. So, we file it, but we get the cost when they file a replat request for us. So, now that we have their money, uh, we'll go file the MyLars once we get them signed by the surveyor and the mayor and the P&amp;Z chair sign them. We do have two variances associated with this. Uh, first is a variance to the sidewalk. They've added the sidewalk note, uh, saying that at such time, they'll extend it through the platted lot, as need dictates. The other is not quite on there yet, and that's why you see the conditional denial before you coming from P&amp;Z, is, uh, city staff and P&amp;Z's recommended partial approval of the variance to section 31 and 42, regarding the urban standard requirements, and approval of the variance as they have the sidewalk note currently on the existing plat as presented to you, and conditional denial as presented.
So I think I'm following you correctly. Uh, at this time, we should entertain a motion to condition, conditionally deny the replat until such time that we see authorization that they have produced this, uh, writing onto the Mylar.
Correct.
For court of record.
Correct.
And that is regarding the addition of a sidewalk?
Uh, the sidewalk note on there is the urban standard street note, which you see on the screen.
Same proof as that one.
Uh, they've already confirmed that they've added the note to the application, so that's not an issue. We're requesting that you approve variance, but partial approval because they haven't added the note on the urban standard street yet.
Do you follow what he's saying?
Of course.
Okay. So, conditional denial of the replat is what we have before us, based upon the fact that some of the language is still not on the records. But, once they get that done, it proceeds on and its replat is approved.
Just going back to that.
Yeah. Okay.
If you said, I'm making love to that.
Let me get back up to the top. We're not there for a motion just yet. I've still got a public hearing open, so. Uh, anybody out in the public want to speak regarding this particular replating issue? We'll close the public hearing at this time. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to condition, conditionally deny the replat for 723 North Crockett Street, being a portion of lot 4 and all of lot 5, block 5 of the Barton addition, as lot 5R, block 5 of the Barton addition, along with the approved variances.
As recommended by P&amp;Z.
As recommended by P&amp;Z.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second. Second by Mr. Hewlett, was it? Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion, questions regarding this replat? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 5. We will now open up a public hearing regarding a request of S&amp;B Real Estate Investments, LP, to rezone property located at 4,200 through 4,204 Donna Court, being lots 24 through 28, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1, from planned development slash residential up to 7,000, to planned development multi-dwelling dash 1, which means a two-family residential, and consider an approved ordinance providing for said rezoning. Scott, it's my understanding that the applicant is wanting to do this because of the downturn in the economy? Is that maybe the motive for taking from a single-family dwelling, being on the site, to going to townhomes, or, um, sorry, duplexes?
That's my understanding, mayor, is they want to tap a little bit different sector of the market, so they're dipping their toe in the water, in essence, on these five lots, and requesting a rezoning from single, single-family residential, minimum 7,000 square foot lots, to duplex, still maintaining the five lots, but rather than having a, uh, a, uh, single-family residence, you would have a single structure with a two-family residence on the five lots. The subsequent plat also shifts property lines a little bit to change the building envelope within the five lots. It doesn't create an increase in lots. Um, it just modifies the building envelopes between the lot lines. The rezoning application, uh, proposes some, uh, variances to our standard base district. Uh, in essence, it allows for the construction of five duplexes. We're increasing the, uh, number of dwellings twofold, reduces the front building setback from 25 to 20, reduces the rear setback from 30 to 25, reduces the side building setback from 8 to 5, and modifies the impermeable cover requirements, uh, actually decreasing that from 70% to 60%. Uh, all other, and the 60% is the same as single-family residential. So they're basically not putting as much concrete down, they're going back to the same 60% requirement as they would in single-family residential, which was the previous PD. Uh, all other conditions of the base district PD will be adhered to. We did have a protest petition from the adjoining property owner to the west. Uh, you can see it earmarked in red to the left of the screen. It constitutes or comprises about 25% approximately of the adjoining property within the 200-foot notification halo, as required by the local ordinance and the state local government code. This will prompt a three-quarter plus note of the city council.
Scott, can you clarify whether or not this is consistent with the comp plan?
It is not. I'm glad to bring that up, Mr. Attorney. Um, the comprehensive plan earmarks this as single-family residential. Uh, in your zoning staff report, what we ask every time we have an inconsistency with the adopted comprehensive plan, we ask that the legislative body, P&amp;Z and city council, read into the record or into the minutes the changes that have taken place since the adoption of the comprehensive plan to warrant consideration. Uh, the P&amp;Z has offered their recommendation to you, in essence, they basically have stated that the adjoining property owner to the west is an RV park, and for them, and their reasoning that provided a logical transition, uh, from the park through the duplex, as proposed, into the single-family residential portion of Ashley Oaks as submitted.
If I can clarify for the council, what Scott's basically saying is that you have a comprehensive plan that sets out all of your requirements for zoning in the city, and you can deviate from the plan as long as you state in your reasoning why you're deviating from it. If that makes sense. And P&amp;Z authored, up as their reasoning for doing that, that they think that this would be a good transition from an RV park which is located to the west, and then the single-family homes would be. And that's what their rationale for deviation is. You can either adopt that rationale, or you can come up with your own rationale. But either way, you have to set out what your rationale is. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, one of the questions I had, mayor, the attorney answer I had written down here when I reviewed it, is this consistent with the 2008 comprehensive plan? And obviously, we know it's not, because staff did a good job of explaining it to us with the packet. Um, and, and the, the concern I had, and, and I think I had, I have an answer, I'm gonna clarify that with you. Am I correct that the protests that we have tonight, the actual protest, is in fact the owner of the trailer park area? Because when I look at lot 23, block 1, am I correct that lot, uh, 23 and block 1 is a homeowner at Ashley Oaks? Is, you see what I'm saying? See where the Donna Court comes out on Donna Circle? Where lot 23, block 1, the blue, uh, the blue, that, that home is in Ashley Oaks, and there's no protest against those folks at all, is that correct?
We have not received one to my knowledge.
Is, is the protester here tonight, mayor?
I'm not aware of that. I can ask, is Mr. Henson here? Apparently not.
Alright, thank you.
Benny Henson. Gentleman by the name of Benny Henson, I think, is the protester.
Is the trailer park, so is it, uh, Benny's or something like that?
No, no, it's not.
It's, it's not a sale, it's a travel trailer park.
But travel trailer's there. And so, just going back to the attorney one more time, because I, we always read this language over and over and over again about meeting the 2008 comprehensive plan, is this consistent with the plan? So, by statute, then, we change that, then we read into the minutes exactly that, that reasoning, and, and P&amp;Z has given us that good reason, hey, it's a good transition. It also actually gives the people in Ashley Oaks kind of a way that it, to screen that trailer park. I mean, if you want to try to look at the positive side of it.
The way I understand that, Mr. Tyra, is that the local government code requires cities, when they zone, to create a comprehensive plan. But at the same time, the local government code understands that as time goes on, situations will change. And so you're allowed to deviate from the comprehensive plan, but you have to set out what your rationale for doing so is.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I could see there's several reasons you could come up with.
Yeah. And, and all P&amp;Z did here was they stated their rationale for why they thought that this was a good transition, and you can, and this was a good rezoning application. And you can either adopt their rationale and read that into your reference to your motion and to your findings, or you can come up with your own.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding this?
Are there other large undeveloped parts of Ashley Oaks, or is it pretty much there? I mean, is there an, uh, potential for substantial increases in, uh, density, otherwise than?
I can't answer that. Uh, don't know what's on the event horizon for the developer. Mayor, if you want, I'd like to turn it back over to you and maybe ask the developer, who's representative up here.
Mr. Hall? Maybe you can answer Mr. Parsons' question.
Yes, my name's John Hall, I live at 3506 Fountain Way in the Axon area. Uh, I don't, uh, well, I just wanna, uh, don't quarrel with the language of dipping our toe, or the developer's toe into, uh, the duplex or multifamily market, uh, but I do want to emphasize, this is the only area that Ashley Oaks cares to consider at all, that we will not come back for any additional duplex lots. This is a little kind of tale of the design of, of Ashley Oaks. Uh, frankly, the, uh, yes, the economy, uh, got the developer's attention, but these lots are tucked back against this RV park, and it, it's right behind that Kevlar marketplace. Uh, it, it's honestly not a very attractive RV park, and, and we want to, uh, put up a screening fence to separate that, and, uh, it is not, these lots are not really ideal for single-family detached. Uh, so that, that really is the reasoning, and yes, the economy got our attention, and we feel like these can be marketed a little easier. We frankly don't care for any more rental units in the balance of this, Ashley Oaks originally is 138 lots, uh, at least that are, uh, under the homeowner association. That blue top house that you see there is one of two houses that was pre-existing, and is technically not in the homeowner association, we're trying to encourage it. But, uh, that, that's our reasoning, and certainly I agree with P&amp;Z's rationale on the comprehensive plan location.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions regarding this? Anybody else from the public want to speak regarding this particular public hearing item? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hall. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the rezoning of the property located at 4,200 through 4,204 Donna Court, being lots 24 through 28, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1, from planned development residential to planned development multi-dwelling 1. Considering approve our ordinance as presented, along with the list of variances that you see. And to make a notation regarding the comprehensive plan, moving from, uh, let me see if I can get P&amp;Z's language right. Moving from, uh, this will provide a viable transition of use between the RV park located to the west, and the single-family homes within the subdivision to the east. Entertain a motion at this time, please. And a reminder, this must be a supermajority vote. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel. Need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyra. As I mentioned, uh, this must be a supermajority vote, which means that four out of the five voters must, uh, approve this. So at this time, calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We will now open a public hearing regarding a request of S&amp;B Real Estate Investments, LP, to replat property located at 4,200 through 4,204 Donna Court, being lots 24 through 28, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1, as lots 24R through 28R, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1, and consider said replat. As we just heard from staff, this is basically a, a changing up, a replat, to allow for, uh, town, uh, duplexes to be placed upon those lots, as opposed to single-family dwellings. Does, uh, anybody on council have any questions regarding this for staff? Entertain a motion to approve the replat as presented. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this? Not, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Now I will entertain a motion to accept the replat of lots 24 through 28, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1, as lots 24R through 28R, block 1 of the Ashley Oaks addition, phase 1.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Perkel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We'll now go to item number 7, open a public hearing regarding a request of HEB for specific use permit for 3804 East Highway 377, to allow a farmer's market within their parking lot at specified times, and consider and approve said SUP. The applicant is requesting approval to designate locations within their HEB parking lot for a temporary farmer's market to be set up. It's my understanding that the parking spaces that they have there, Scott, are more than adequate for their facility, is that correct, sir?
That's absolutely correct, mayor. They have ample parking, uh, they exceeded the number of parking as required by their store to get their certificate of occupancy. They're at about 120%, so they have spaces to give. They delineated an area that's, uh, that's not cutting into their required parking, and is also outside their, uh, fire lanes that are striped on property. The applicant had initially proposed the request to just go for the month of May this coming year to kind of test the waters, to see how it worked. The, uh, P&amp;Z was so ecstatic that they were getting a farmer's market, that they amended it on the fly at, uh, and worked with the applicant, and said, no, we'd rather see it a little longer. That's why you see the conditions before you. They suggested May through August for a three-year term, uh, and they wanted to work with the developer on the application. So that's the, even though the applicant has submitted just May for one year, that was quickly revised by the P&amp;Z to go from May to August, the end of August, for a three-year
Okay, uh, thanks for that clarification. Uh, one question I have is regarding insurance. The HEB store will be handling any insurance regarding the farmer's market? Uh, I see Pat's out there. Pat, could I, could I invite you up to the podium, please, sir? You're here on behalf of the applicant HEB, right? The, the question is regarding insurance for the farmer's market. I mean, I, I guess you're gonna piggyback it off of your existing liability and insurance there?
Yeah, exactly, that you'd be being self-insured. Like, we, we take full responsibility of, uh, of all of the invitees that we invite into our parking lot to simply raise the awareness level of North Texas growers, you know, in, in conjunction with, uh, Texas-owned and operated, uh, companies such as HEB, that we take full liability in, for anything that would occur.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just have one question.
Mr. Tyra?
Yeah. Pat, didn't I see you on stage the other night?
No, you did not. That was my twin brother.
Somebody else?
That was my twin brother.
As we deviate.
I do have a serious question, Pat.
Yes, sir.
You know, I wouldn't ask that, huh, if somebody else wanted to.
Good.
But anyway, back to this, you know, they have vegetables and produce that runs in October too, don't they, here in Texas, November?
They do.
Do we need to extend this out to cover those, uh, those months?
I mean, that, that would be, that would be totally up to the city council, you know, as far as, like I said, uh, HEB is simply trying to raise the awareness level of, uh, of, uh, HEB coming into the new market, not everyone knowing that, that HEB was, uh, you know, born in Kerrville in Texas, and, and we haven't gone outside the states other than outside the United States. So, I mean, i- if the city council wishes to...
I love Chris.
Mayor, follow up on what Tony said, if you'll see other, other consideration, it talks about how you've got a lot more spaces than you need.
Yes.
So, you know, I'm gonna follow Tony's lead and say we approve it for three years, for three years, and don't put any months involved, and you guys decide when you want to have your markets and whatever you wanted to, in that respect.
Sounds good.
I have one question for...
Well, hang on, because we're not quite there to make a, a motion like that, but I, I appreciate your wanting to jump forward on this. Mr. Hewlett, you have another question?
Pat, if you, uh, have they, uh, piloted this anywhere in any of the other HEBs, and encountered any problems?
You know, not, not that I'm aware of, and I've been with HEB for, for 30 years. Like I said, I, I've been involved in, uh, two in my past, and we, we really only do it when we really want to raise the awareness level of the, of the local market. I know that, uh, Central Market has done it up in, uh, South Lake and, and, uh, and other areas, and they've done some down in Austin, but, uh, we really haven't even had, had to extend it out into, into any of the markets that I'm aware of.
So this is the first time, or kind of?
First, it's, it's, it's a first, and, and like I said, we, we've done it on smaller scales, and like I said, this is, as far as testing the waters, we're gonna, we're gonna, we, we've sent out the invitations, and like I said, all of the, all of the people that, uh, that we want to invite, you know, we want to make sure that they meet HEB standards as far as, as growers and the product that they bring to the store are gonna meet.
Are you getting a lot of response from people that you send out the invitations?
Well, the, the San Antonio buying department has sent out invitations, and my understanding is they've got about, uh, eight buyers, I mean, eight growers that are currently interested in, in coming to participate, so that's pretty good.
Are you bringing potatoes, strawberries to Granberry?
You know we are.
Any other questions for the applicant?
This be set up them individually or what they had? It won't be like you're gonna run it through HEB, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any bacon wants to sell can sell.
Well, I mean, they, they still have to meet...
Have to be approved.
They, they've, they've got to be approved through our HEB buying office, so it's, uh, we're just gonna, it has to, if you have a... They, they've, they've got to be approved through our HEB buying office, so it's, uh, we're just going to, it up to, if you have a piece of land out behind your property, you grow some things, you can bring it up to the store. We, we want to make sure that, that those that are bringing up meet the, the same qualifications that you would expect inside the store are going to be outside the store as well.
So that makes a good point, Ken. Local growers here, we have quite a few.
Yes.
Do they pass your criteria as we sit here tonight or we, you know, we talk about this?
Well, like I said, that, that's kind of first on HEB standpoint. We want to make sure that, that we get them the exposure that they need through our buying office, so that any questions that they might have, we just want to make sure that anything we have to offer meets the, the same standards that we would expect in, in our stores.
Another first that they have on this store is everything in their bakery is baked there. Nothing is brought in by, on any other store.
You giving a commercial?
Yes, I am. It's good.
Pat, one other question, since this is your first time for HEB to do this.
For me.
Oh, oh, they've done it in the past.
Yeah, they've done it in the past, but I, I haven't been personally involved in it.
Okay, they've done it before.
Yeah, we've done it. It was a, it, it was a suggestion that, uh, San Antonio and their buying, when we came up and we're trying to just simply raise the awareness level of Granbury HEB. It's been done.
Thank you, Pat. Becky, could I get you to come up to the podium for a minute? I've got a question. From your perspective, is there any kind of a health issue that we need to be concerned with having a farmer's market?
No, none that I would be concerned about. Um, whole uncut produce is not regulated under the health code or health permit is not required. Um, I'm sure the store is very aware that when they get into cutting melons and some other products, then they are covered under the state health code, but, and therefore in Granbury as well, but, um, if, if he's selling whole uncut produce, then that doesn't fall under health, health permit.
What about when that guy wants to offer you a sample? Is that an issue?
Sampling, I'm assuming that if they're gonna, um, offer samples, I don't know that they are yet, but if they are, say like Dallas Summer Market, I would hope that they would use a vegetable or fruit wash on it and just sample it. Do any slicing in a, in a clean sanitary manner, just like they do in the store.
All right. Thank you very much.
Becky.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Allen has a question for you.
How do they do it over here? Because I buy produce over at, uh, Ken Hackens, you know, he has the farmer's market there, son does that. I've ate a lot of cantaloupe, a lot of pieces of walnut melon. How they, you're saying they got to have a health permit to do that?
If they want to sell cut melons, that requires the health permit in the state of Texas.
But sampling in the state of Texas?
Sampling is different.
Okay, so you have, they would have no problem with it?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, so folks, what we have before us, uh, we have a public hearing that's still open. Need to, uh, hear from anybody else in the public that wants to talk regarding this particular public hearing? This is your chance. This time, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion from council regarding this particular approval of an SUP. Ken, let, let me put in some, uh, language. Entertain a motion to approve the farmer's market SUP as requested for a period of three years. And it will automatically expire on August 31st of 2015.
Now, that running consistently in three years, Mayor, you pulled out a month.
I, 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 I just made a motion to approve the SUP for a farmer's market for a period of three years, and it will automatically expire on August 31st, 2015. This is a motion and entertaining.
May I just make one suggestion, that your motion include that the farmer's market be, uh, conducted in an area that's delineated on the map? And, and you don't have to have any respect to months if you don't want to, but I would. They ha, I mean, they have a spot picked out.
Yeah, man.
Uh, well.
It's up to y'all.
A- as I said, I, I
I trust HEB for that.
I, I put, put a motion out there. I just haven't heard anybody else.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Tyra. Need a second on it, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Now we'll go into discussion regarding the delineation on the parking lot. Does anybody feel like that's, uh, something we need to be worried about?
I feel like HEB management can make their decision where they want to have it, because they know what's best for their flowing customers in, flowing customers out, because they want more business, so let's leave it up to the professionals.
Anybody else on council want to discuss this?
I, I've got one question, though. Is there an advantage to going to three years and not a year to year because of it being, you know, the first time out here? If something was to go wrong in the one year, then you would not want to go and approve it for a following year?
You make a good point.
You know, we...
I mean, is there an advantage to doing, is there an advantage to doing three years?
No.
Okay. Well, now, I understand that our regulations we have in force here, whether it be through, uh, Becky or through zoning or anything else, you, Scott, we've talked about that before.
Yeah, that, if there's a, if there's a, uh, health permit issue, Becky will be, be in the field. If there's a, any kind of complaints or violations of the SUP, certainly staff has the latitude within three years to actually take an amendment of the SUP back to council.
May I give you an example? If somebody came forward to the police department and said, hey, we had a problem out there because of the way this was constructed, and that would come through the, back to the city, and the city staff would work with HEB to resolve that?
We would, we would actually go, uh, and approach this manager of the HEB and say what violations existed, and we would try to remedy them upfront before any public hearing, uh, but certainly.
The only thing I would say was with if, is there an advantage to doing the three years and not a year to year, other than the fact you get to see Pat every year?
Uh, it saves, saves him money rather than doing it year to year, yeah. There, there's an application fee.
So there's a fee.
Right. Any, any other questions regarding this particular item? We have a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, applied for farmer's market SUP by HEB for a period of three years, and it will automatically expire on August 31st of 2015. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good growing to them. This time, we're moving on to item number eight, open a public hearing at this time regarding a request of Ronnie Daffin for a specific use permit for 1302 Weatherford Highway Suite Number 104 to allow a taxidermy shop on a part of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Daffin Edition, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. Seems the applicant is requesting to open a taxidermy shop within an existing tenant space in the Daffin Industrial Park. It's located out on Highway 51 north. Mr. Daffin, who is the owner of the property, will be operating the proposed use out of an existing office he occupies. The zoning ordinance requires the issuance of an SUP within a commercial zoning district to accommodate a taxidermy shop. No animal processing, council members, will be allowed on the site in conjunction with the proposed taxidermy use. Uh, Scott, do you have anything else you'd like to add regarding this?
Yes, sir.
Uh, does the applicant want to speak to us regarding, uh, this transition in your industrial? All right. Anybody else from the public want to speak regarding this particular item? This time, we'll close the public hearing. Now entertain a motion to approve the SUP as requested for 1302 Weatherford Highway Suite 104 to allow a taxidermy shop on part of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Daffin Edition, and approve the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this?
Mayor, the P&amp;Z recommended a three-year term on this as well.
A three-year term? I see that now. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to ask that you amend the motion to read for a period of three years, Mr. Allen? You're okay with that?
Yep.
Mr. Hewlett, you were the second. Are you okay with the amendment? Calling for the question to approve the applied for SUP for a taxidermy shop for a period of three years. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number nine, consider and approve closing sections of Bridge and Crockett Street in the one-block area surrounding the Hood County Courthouse Historic Square for the 2012 General Granbury's Birthday Celebration, which will be held on March 17th and 18th, 2012. Council members, since, uh, the packet was, uh, relayed to us, uh, it's come to our attention that there may be some vendors that are going to be set up in the streets, and so, uh, instead of closing it, uh, as listed from the hours listed each day, we are suggesting that we begin the street closure on Friday, March 16th at 5:00 PM, and reopen on Sunday, March 18th. And it says 6:00 PM, but I, I think the vendors probably need a little bit longer. I'm suggesting, uh, 8:00 PM.
So this will be a total shutdown completely, then, all weekend?
Well, in the years past, it's been done that a way. There's usually some sort of a horse or play, uh, area for kids to ride, uh, ponies out in the street, and they normally just block it off for the entire weekend.
And let me say, I, uh, spent some time today with HGMA, and, uh, they're extremely, uh, happy the fact they've had an unusual response to, uh, vendors wanting to be part of this festival. And so I gave, at that point, permission for them to put those, um, vendors out in the streets so they could, they were out.
Yeah, this means some additional income for, for the HGMA.
Wayne, I don't, I mean, Mayor, I don't think we can actually say then if we, if we gotta, they've got to be closed at 10:00 PM or 6:00 PM either on especially Friday and Saturday, because they're going to be set up after overnight.
Uh, that's what I was just, just stating.
And keep it closed now. No, no out.
And move at 8:00 o'clock at night on last day. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, in other words, uh, entertain, uh, a motion now to approve the closing of Bridge and Crockett Street in the one-block area around the Hood County Courthouse Square beginning Friday, March 16th at 5:00 PM, and reopen on Sunday, March 18th at 8:00 PM. Entertaining a motion, please.
Can I bring, can I bring a couple things to your attention that happened this afternoon? Too late?
Sure. Go right ahead.
I just want to let you know that, um, Police Chief and, and Captain, uh, brought to my attention this afternoon that, um, due to an emergency, basically egress route that happens on the corner there in front of Shirley Hook's office, that needs to remain open, and their worry with this is that if we allow, if we allow any type of vendors on those two streets, um, they're not going to be able to make that corner turn with large floats or long trailers or anything. So, we did relay that information to Brenda Hyde this afternoon, and not sure what she was going to do with it after that point.
So Chief Galvan, your recommendation is to keep them, uh, more to the west on Bridge Street, more to the south on Crockett Street if they're going to set up vendors and keep them to the inside?
This was our concern that came up late when, uh, we found out that the booth size that they're planning on putting out there on the street are 10-foot and 12-foot square, uh, booths. If you put 10-foot or 12-foot square booths on the street side of the square, a parade is not going to get through there. And, and that's our problem, is that if they put those booths anywhere down that street, you now have a parade that is a street width making a very tight corner and having to funnel down maybe one lane width to get through. Some of these floats have very long trailers. They're wide. They have a hard enough time as it is making that corner. And the minute we found out how big the booths were going to be, uh, it, I just don't see how it can be done without, without it causing a problem to the parade. Now, if they were to move up or lift them and put them out after the parade, then it, of course, it wouldn't be an issue, but to have those booths sitting on those two streets with a parade having to come by, it, it, it's just not feasible.
Yeah, and we mentioned that to them, and they were going to go back and look at it, you know, I, I don't, we haven't heard back, we haven't heard back from them, but...
And I had officers go out today and measure 10 feet and 12 foot off the squares on those two streets, and it's just not going to pass. It won't.
What kind of clearance do you have when you have that kind of 10-foot, 12-foot? What, what kind of clearance do you have from?
Well, now, here's, here's another issue that we have, is how many of y'all seen the parades? How many people are on the street with chairs?
Sure, of course.
We would either have to barricade at the very minimum to where nobody could set foot off the curve of the street, and you're still looking at a very narrow gap for these, uh, floats or whoever's in the parade, the entries in the parade to have to sh, actually shut down and squeeze down into a narrow, uh, narrower size just to get down Bridge Street and Crockett Street. That doesn't include making the turn. Making the turn is going to be everything. I don't know what kind of floats are in this parade. We, we, we never know what kind of floats are in the parade. But if, if they're like history and past, there's going to be some long trailers, and with those booths out there, it's not going to work. And then you start thinking about a marching band. If the band's going to be in it, you've got a band that marches pretty much the width of the street. You turn a corner, now you're asking this band that's in formation to whittle down into one little lane and then carry that all the way around to the backside of the square.
When were you notified about this, Mitch?
This afternoon.
Okay.
I have a question, Mitch. What would happen if you let them set up, left the corner open? If I'm understanding where this is at, where it's located at, I should have, uh, let them go down past, uh, that's the one block with David, uh, Southern, turn left there, parade, and work?
No, sir. Can I? That would shut down our, our emergency route.
We, we've already established the parade route as well.
It was a fair statement, because you know what's going to happen when we leave here tonight with the decision, it's not going to be favorable. We want to see as many vendors down there as we can.
Exactly.
And so, if, is there any possible...
But hang, hang, well, hang on to that thought for just a second, because what, what we're talking about here is the street closures. That's what we have before us. The fact that HGMA is thinking of adding some additional vendors outside of the, the parking area of the square, that's not what we're considering here. What we're considering is this. Now, I, I, I got to tell you, I, I'm going to be visiting with Brenda this upcoming week regarding the parade and talking with her about it, and I'm sure you've probably put a bug in her ear already about the ramifications of trying to get a parade past those vendors.
We, we did that late this afternoon. Becky contacted her and, and let her know when we found out what the size of the booths were going to be, that, that was going to cause extreme problems with that parade on that day. And, and speaking to Becky, Becky even mentioned to her, you know, what about bringing them in, having them set up right after the parade's over with, then there wouldn't be a problem. But we haven't heard back, uh, from Miss Hyde. Becky just told me she hadn't heard back from her, so that I don't know. As far as the street, street closures, those are the closures that place every year, uh, when we have the parade, so that's not the issue. I, I just wanted it to be clarified that as of right now, if, if they plan on putting 10-foot square and 12-foot square, uh, booths out there that we learned the size of, uh, this afternoon, that parade is going to be a nightmare.
Right. And, and that's good thought. I mean, because it's very possible they may be able to utilize some of the Granbury Square Plaza for these additional vendors as well. Keeping them off the square entirely and, and making it expand a little bit wider, so. Uh, but once again, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. But once again, uh, we have a motion on the, uh, actually, I'm entertaining a motion to, uh, do a street closure for his, the Historic Square for the 2012 General Granbury's Birthday Celebration, March 17th and 18th, begin a street closure. Yes, sir?
Well, that, that, then, if, if they're not going to put booths up there, well, then we just should go back to the, having it open at night, like, you know?
It's never been open at night, just so you know.
So it's never been open?
It was just, it was, um...
Okay, so the times in here were...
It was clear.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I got you there. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. All right.
So moved then, Mayor. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Save your breath.
We, we have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Can I get a second on the street closures? Uh, second by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion regarding the street closure? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 10. Uh, consider and approve the Granbury Goes Green Electronics Recycling Event planned to be held on April 21st, 2012 at Hewlett Park. If you'll remember, council members, uh, there was an electronic recycling event that was held last year. It was, uh, we had 289 people drop off a truck and a half load full of electronic equipment sent to the recycling processing plant last year. Uh, the company Techway Services and IESI were... The company Techway Services and IESI were both involved in that event. We had IESI there to accept plastics and paper as well as anything else people brought up that they wanted to get rid of, except for liquids and any kind of fluid refuge. We didn't accept anything like that. The proposal is, we'll have a little bit of electricity down there used by the stage. We'll have a few entertainers on the stage. We'll need some barricades, some, a little bit of signage, and I'll be there to operate throughout the whole day and make sure the event goes off without a hitch. There is a little bit of cost in banners and advertising, and I've asked Shauna to present that to us. Shauna, if you can, please just highlight the cost of the banners. The proposal was to put a banner on either side of an IESI truck to draw attention to the park, because we felt one of the issues is people may not know exactly where the park is. We were also gonna utilize the marquee across from the park with Granberry Goes Green and arrow pointing towards the park. But IESI has offered to allow us the use of one of their trucks to attach a banner to. I know you had sent me some information regarding some different size of banners. I'm thinking more on the cheaper, the better, 4x10 sounds to me like it's a decent banner. Can you relate to council what the cost of that size of a banner would be?
Sure, absolutely. Well, I was just asked to bring forward the marketing plan for this event. Let's go ahead and go to the first slide.
Oh, you have a slide presentation?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I think it's embedded in, yeah, in the presentation.
Oh, and just for clarification, the Granberry Goes Green recycle event is taking place in Hewlett Park across from the Conference Center.
Is it where we had that?
Yes, it is. It's where it was held last year.
We didn't have any banners in the last one year?
We had a...
Or do we have any?
We had a very small banner. It was like a little 3x5, I believe it was. That's all we had. If I remember right, the price of a 4x10 banner was under $100, is that correct?
That's correct. We're gonna go ahead, there we go. The Granberry Goes Green, as we talked about, April 21st, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Hewlett Park, as the mayor just stated. What you're seeing there is the proposed logo and banner design for the event on April 21st. The next slide is going to be talking about the event promotion costs, which is what you're hearing on the banners. Banner printing, I've proposed three different companies, we've gotten three different bids. As you can see, some are local, some, one is out of Fort Worth. After receiving the specs of the banner from I, or, excuse me, the specs of the truck from IESI, their truck is actually 9x27. So, I wanted to present different sizes for the council to view. As you can see, 4x10 is obviously much more affordable, especially if we're doing two banners, one on each side of the truck. But we do have the opportunity or option to do 9x27 if you so choose. The only other additional cost that's associated with Company C is a $45 graphic setup fee after we submit the proposed graphics. And as the mayor has already stated, two have been requested, one for each side of the truck. So, that would be, for instance, if you were going with Company A, 115 times two. Also, I was asked to price some advertising options for the Hood County News if the council so choose to promote this event in advertising versus public relations. The triple play is running three times and one in the plus that comes out to non-subscribers, $462. And then you can also do that separately, three separate ads. If we were going to run April 11th, 14th, and 18th, that would be 361 without the plus. And then any local PR, such as press releases, information to homeowners association, newsletters, et cetera, and social media would be done at no cost in-house by city staff. And then, I'd just like to share an additional slide. For additional event promotion for this event, the banner design is, the proposed banner design is complete, and that's the one that we have submitted in the PowerPoint today, as well as a local media list. We've compiled that, press release, website and calendar of events. The event, all of that information has already been compiled. Utility bill statements. We've also completed like the media bio for this event. And then, to be determined if this, if this move for Granberry TV scheduled interviews and also promote that during the Exploring Granberry segment, social media. And if you so choose, advertising, the posters and flyer design can be done in-house by staff and printed flyers can be done as well. And that's all I have.
Is that the total cost?
Well, the total cost, it just depends on what you choose, which banner you'd like, which company you'd like to go for, go with with the printing. And then, if you choose to do advertising, that's up to the council decision, from my understanding.
I have a question. I remember last year, it seemed to be pretty successful. People come to the county?
We actually invited everybody. It was a community-wide reach, and we had people throughout the community, throughout the county come and drop off equipment. It wasn't limited to somebody having a city utility bill. We opened it up for the entire community. And this year, with, thanks, thanks to her social media skills and the fact that she's designing such a great product, I think we're gonna see a bigger influx. They may actually have to bring three trucks down this year to haul off all the product. And I do want to stress that this year, they said that the company Techway stated that they will take TVs free of charge. Last year, they had to charge $10 for every TV. But this year, they are taking every kind of electronic item you can imagine to drop off. So, it's opened up the door quite a, quite a bit.
Would it be appropriate just to move to give a budget of $2,500 and have it work within as that close to... I mean, because when we see all these options, do we let them make the decisions or something?
Yeah. Finance manager, city manager says that works fine for him.
Does this include the band that will be there?
They're free of charge. I'm just gonna line up some local artists to perform. No charge on that.
See, what to, I don't mind spending $2,500 to vote to finish, but people that, the two companies, have you asked them about happening with this? They're paying for it.
Well, they're both helping through the recycling of the product and hauling it out of here for the community.
They're making money out of it, they would be doing it. I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking, just paid a taxidermy.
This is the city's portion of this event. You know, that's one thing that Techway had stated last year, that if they were going to do this event, the burden would be on the city to promote it. Now, last year, we spent a lot more than $2,500, just so you understand. We weren't doing things in-house. Okay?
Yeah.
And this year, I thought we'd let an expert take care of this and run with it. Last year, I was divvying out press releases directly to the homeowners association, trying to get them out there.
Is there any way, because you're having this park over there, and I mean, you're gonna have some music, people are gonna be, the people are gonna be lined up, we know that, dropping off stuff. Is there, will there be any kind of vendors that you're gonna, is that a promotion?
I hadn't even considered vendors, because I didn't want to go there.
Well, if the mayor's recommending...
But I would, I would suggest that we, as I said, this is, this is something that I feel is great for our community as a whole. It says the city is willing to help out the entire county in disposing of that electronic waste that's piled up out there. It's open up to everybody that's poor and, and living in a trailer house, to somebody who's rich and living in those lakefront homes, to get rid of that accumulated electronic stuff that's piled up. So, I think it's a good win-win. Entertain some sort of a motion. Anybody else want to make one?
Mayor, based upon our, our city manager and what he recommended, I'm gonna move that, that we approve a budget of $2,500 for the Granberry Goes Green Recycling Event.
And can I get you to add, to take place in Hewlett Park?
Hewlett Park, on April 21st, 2012. Yes, sir.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second, please?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hewlett. Anybody else want to discuss this item?
CSI, if you're interested in a truck, a recycler?
CSI, no, but IESI. Yes, IESI will, actually, they will actually have a gas-powered recycle truck here as well that they utilize up in the Metroplex area.
I'm like seeing our, our street sweeper, our brand new truck out there with a banner. We could do that.
Be a good idea to promote it, wouldn't it?
We can either do it with our street sweeper through IESI. They have, they are willing to donate a truck for that.
We'd have to burn our gas, we'll let them do it.
All in favor of the Granberry Goes Green Electronics Recycling Event in a budget of $2,500 to be held at April 21st, 2012 at Hewlett Park? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Before Shauna leaves, would you introduce?
Sure, absolutely. Council, Mayor, and Mr. City Manager, just wanted to take a moment to introduce our new sales manager for the Granberry Resort Conference Center, as well as many of the other facilities that we have now in Granberry. This is Jenalee Latimer. Jenalee, would you like to go ahead and stand? She started yesterday.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the city.
We're excited to have her on our team.
Glad to have you. Brings us down to item number 11. Write-off inactive utility accounts is basically what it amounts to. Consider a request from staff for approval to write off inactive utility accounts with balances outstanding for one year or more. Hi, Ava.
Each year, we analyze these accounts, and if they are inactive and they have done since one year older, we would take them against allowance for bad debt and write them off in an effort to turn them over to our collection agency and try to collect on these accounts. We have also put in effort to collect before we do this, but if we are unable to reach the customers, this is the best approach we can do. We also have attachments where it shows you that the write-off amount to less than half percent of all billed out each year, and this is very acceptable according to our auditors. We have a list exactly telling you the different types of write-offs we are doing. The most you can see for apartment, I'm sorry, for utility customers, apartments, some commercial customers, and some bankruptcy. And if you have any questions for me?
We're looking at a total of an $89,247 write-off at this point.
Yes.
My question has to do with this list showing the fiscal year in which these write-offs occurred. I thought we did this as well last year. Does this just keep rolling along, so we just keep seeing it year after year after year?
No, this is each year, we look at accounts which are inactive for the one year older. So, last year, we did the same thing for accounts which were one year older. These are new write-offs, not the same thing as we've done last year.
Yeah, we do this every year, so we don't build up a lot of accounts within our account that is uncollectible. It's considered to be at least questionable to collect.
Well, I'm like the mayor, this, we wrote off last year. Is this, or am I hearing it right, is one year?
$89,000 is one year.
Over last year.
But as she said, it's a half percent. A half percent, less than 1%.
Am I correct that is, I think you list out here, the public can't hear us, I really can't read the document we have in front of us. But those delinquent accounts, even though it's written off, you turn it over to a third party for collections. It looks like that with that bad debt you collected last year out of that, which we didn't get anything, we got $6,000 something dollars out of it.
Right.
So, that's, there's always a continued process to collect that with a third party.
Yes. If that same customer would try to come back and try to open an account, we have a process where we would not allow them until they pay off their bad debt. So, their, their balances don't really go away. We are always aware of how much they owe us.
Let me say this too, is as you see, the majority of the write-off is people simply leaving, okay, and not paying the bill and moving outside the city. And that's why we have a deposit. And in fact, what happens is everyone has 25 days to make their payment, so they don't make that. And by the time we figure out that they're not gonna pay us, two or three weeks later, when we actually then come and turn them off, then basically, we have almost two months owed to us. And that's why we have to set up almost a two-month deposit whenever they come in, just to make sure that we don't lose a lot of money, so.
On the part that you get collectors from a debt collector, do they get 50/50, or do we discuss?
Yes, it's half, 50/50, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions for staff? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the write-off of the inactive utility accounts with outstanding balances over one year or more, as presented.
I see a loop.
We have a motion by Mr. Perk, will need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number 12. Entertain a motion at this time to postpone until April 16th meeting. This will allow staff to address some additional concerns that have arisen from employees and directors regarding clarification of some procedures as outlined in the manual proposal. Once again, a motion, entertain a motion to postpone until April 16th to allow staff a little more time.
I have, I have requested this postponement.
I was gonna say, yes. So, does that give you all plenty of time? If everything's worked out, okay, okay. You got all kinds of stuff going on here.
So...
Anybody want to make that motion?
Vicki made the motion.
Oh, I didn't hear him.
I couldn't hear it.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Parsons and a second by Mr. Allen to postpone until April 16th the adoption and resolution amending the City of Granberry Personnel Policies Manual. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.